Good morning. It is August 9, 2023, 9:00 a.m. And here we are with the Clark County Council and with the Railroad Advisory Board for workshop and work session on freight rail dependent use. So to kick this off, staff, shall we start with the Railroad Advisory Board? Or do you wish to say a couple of words of intro?
Yes. I want to first of all, thank you to the Board of County Counselors for allowing us to give our presentation today.
And you are most welcome. And if you could pull the mic a little bit closer, please. I don't want to miss a word.
Need a phone book to sit on there.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway, I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to give this presentation today. And I'd also like to thank Kevin Tyler and the staff at the Parks and Land Division for helping us put this presentation together today. Let me introduce myself. I'm Daniel Weaver and the Chair of the Railroad Advisory Board. My background is in finance, accounting. I've worked with one of the large, big CPA international firms for many years. And then I was the CFO of a couple of major corporations after that. And then I semi-retired and decided I would do some community service work and got into Railroad Advisory Board 20-plus years ago. And I've still been trying to make something happen. I have beside me the Vice Chair, John Schaefer, who has been a construction executive for many years and did some of the construction in and around the Vancouver area. Do you want to say anything, John?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. So at any rate, you have our history and background. And if you're ready, we'll go ahead and start. In the first slide, it is the summary. It says 33-mile railroad in Portland-Vancouver Junction Railroad and freight rail dependent use and dollars to Clark County. Those are the areas that we're going to talk about. The railroad will be very brief. The Vancouver Junction Railroad will be very brief. We'll focus our, most of our discussion on the freight rail dependent use and the value to Clark County so that we give you a picture of what we think should happen and can happen. So let me go to the next slide. The history, just briefly, the railroad was built in the late 1800s and early 1900s over a period of time. And it had some difficulties financially and so on. It was used primarily in the logging and lumber industry for those years. And then it was purchased by Clark County in the mid-1980s. Apparently, there was different transactions that had to take place to make it happen. But it was in the mid-1980s that it was purchased and has been used by the county since. And there's a website that's on the Clark County website that gives you a more in-depth history of the railroad if you haven't already looked at it. We had a, when I joined Railroad Advisory Board, there was an operator that was not very successful in operating the railroad. And he sort of ran it down to the point where it was doing less than 20 cars a year. And his term expired. And then we did a search for a new operator. We were intimately involved with that process during that time period. And we got a new operator in the early 2000s. The track was in pretty terrible condition. And I go to the next slide and give you just a brief introduction to what the tracks look like. The track from Fruit Valley Road up to 78th Street is that middle track, 85-pound, it's 85 to 90-pound track. And the poundage is the weight of a piece of track three feet long. So that's how you measure the poundage. And then from 78th up to Battleground, it's spotty. Most of it has been replaced with that 85, 90-pound rail. But if you go from there, from Battleground up to Chillachie, it's mostly the 60 or 66-pound rail all the way up there. So it's pretty small rail. For comparison, the 136-pound rail is what they use on the BNSF mainline and all their high-speed stuff. So it's 136-pound or larger for the heavy cars and so on. So our track is usable at slow speeds all the way up to line. Okay, the next slide. The funding, we got our first grant for the railroad upgrades in the early 2000s. And that was spearheaded by Fred Abraham, a railroad coordinator that we, I lobbied mostly very heavily, the then commissioners, to get a railroad coordinator who could watch the day-to-day activity from the county's perspective. And Fred was able to get us involved with the legislature. And we made many visits up to the legislature to get the early grants that we got. We've got a total so far of $9.3 million worth of grants to upgrade the railroad. Their property along the railroad, there was little or no industrial property along the tracks. And that's what we continually looked for from, you know, almost day one. The industrial property was either used or not available in some manner. And when I, like I said, when I joined the railroad, we had no dedicated railroad management. And I lobbied hard for a coordinator. And we got Fred Abraham. And he did an excellent job of tackling the railroad and, like I said, got us involved with legislators in getting grants. He got us, got involved with, you know, getting property. And he helped do the first thing, which I'll talk about in a minute, the first stab at getting railroad property along the railroad track. After that, we had John Holliday, who was a very good technician and did a very good inventory of the track and the bridges and all that, but wasn't the legislative contact that we needed to get the grants. And then we had Jeff Swanson, who was very active in that, both that and economic development. And he was the one that spearheaded the study for industrial property in the whole county. And as a result of that study, then we launched into the Rural Industrial Land Bank activity to get that for railroad property along the track. And I'll show those to you in just a moment. Next slide. Okay. Again, history is we got contracted, the new provider or the new railroad operator in 2004. They have a long history of family business in the railroad. He grew the carloads, annual carloads from virtually nothing to near the 1,000 cars a year in pre-pandemic. And then as the pandemic hit and all bets were off at that point. He has experience in railroad and has a commitment, but needs land adjacent to the railroad to operate. Okay, note on the next one. This is the first stab at getting property. If you look sort of in the middle, there's a purple, purple spot right there. And that was, was spearheaded by Fred Abraham. And we got a piece of property dedicated to the railroad. That was all passed through the commissioners at the time. And right below that, there's a hash mark, and that was Railroad Reserve. And then to the right of that or to the east of that is the blue, light blue area. And that was designated as Light Industrial Property. And that was, was all dedicated at that time through the efforts of Fred and working through and was all put through the planning group and through the council to get it dedicated. It ran into some problems. It was contested and ultimately reversed at some point. I don't know what all the problems were at that time. We were not involved in the legalities of what took place at that point in time. That was in about 2007. Could go to the next slide. That's the, that's a blow-up of that area. Like I said, the purple is, is the railroad industrial property that was dedicated to railroad. Down below, it was reserved. And then across the way, the light blue was Light Industrial. Next slide. Then in 2015, roughly, the Rural Industrial Land Bank was worked on. And that is the crosshatched area right there. Two pieces, that was the Lagler property on the west side of 205, the west side of SR503. And then the other part was his property on the east side. And that was set up as a Rural Industrial Land Bank. Again, ran into some difficulties in how it was set up and ultimately was reversed. Okay, let's get into Senate Bill 5517. In simple terms, the intent of 5517 was to provide Clark and Okanagan Counties a way to use the rail-served properties adjacent to the railroad tracks. I mean, it's plain and simple, that was the intent for that bill. It went through some gyrations. At one point in time, all the counties in the state wanted to get on the bandwagon, but none of them had a railroad, dedicated railroad in their county. So it ended up being carved back to just those two counties. The provisions were to guide counties for, to modify the Growth Management Act and define resource lands adjacent to the railroad and set the industrial development regulations. So it was up to the counties, to those two counties, to decide how they were going to implement that process. I mean, obviously, there are a lot of if ands or buts included in there. During the implementation, there was a Freight Rail Dependent Use Committee set up, 11 individuals involved in many different disciplines throughout the county. And including the Railroad Advisory Board and Economic Development Group, Port of Vancouver, City Battleground, someone from the real estate industry, someone from the Farm Bureau, some from the neighborhood, all working on that. Required a 67.7%, two-thirds vote on all measures that were decided by the committee. The committee then forwarded their recommendations to the council. The recommendation was that they increase. At that point, the planning group had advised a 90, 500-foot, sorry, 500-foot corridor around the track to be developed. And they had then designated a site to work with. The committee came back and said that that's not enough land available. And so they recommended that it be considered to be a mile from the track, anything can, mile from the track between the Battleground and the Vancouver growth boundaries. That was the size of, then they approved the permitted uses and they approved the development standards at that time. The council decided to only implement the smaller 500-foot corridor from the tracks that had been recommended by the planning department. And because of legal issues at the time that arose, they did not approve the permitted uses and did not approve the development standards, which were, like I said, already set by the FRDU committee. The, just to backtrack a moment, the two situations that I mentioned before, the freight rail industrial property that we had done in 2007 had already gone through the permitted uses in depth. And then we get again, when we did the Rural Industrial Land Bank, they'd already gone through permitted uses. And we've now done it the third time with Senate Bill 5517, all with different sets of people. But it's been gone through several times. And the permitted uses shouldn't have any major issues with it. The development standards were all set at least as high as the highest county requirement and in some cases slightly higher than the county standards. So there shouldn't be an issue with that. We now get to the point where we, as a railroad advisory group, are making the recommendation that the county adopt the larger one-mile, they consider anything within a mile of the railroad track, but take out those areas that are highly parcellized and highly populated so that you're not, you know, taking in the whole brush-carrying neighborhood in a highly populated area. So it's just the major, mostly agriculture land in that area within that one-mile radius, not to take in everything. And then allow, once you take in that property, then allow that there's parcels that may be connected to those properties. In other words, they might be owned by the same individuals as property already taken into that. If they're connected and have an access through properties already designated as freight rail dependent use, could be connected to those and added to the properties. And any parcel, it has to be a whole combined parcel of at least 200 acres. And that is to enable the adjacent definition to be applied to the entire line all the way up through Chillachie. And that's the next recommendation we make, is apply the definition of adjacent to the entire 33-mile line. And the reason for putting the 200 combined acres on there, that number could move one way or the other. But you don't want to have a 20-acre parcel out in the middle of everywhere that's got an industrial property on it without having some other supporting around it, either other industrial properties or whatever in the area. So you don't want to just have spots here and there of 20 acres or 10 acres or whatever. The next thing is that I think that the, we think that the council should adopt the committee development regulations. Like I said, it's, they're in most cases a higher standard than, than the county maximum. Should also adopt the committee's permitted uses. Those permitted uses can always have, be added, some kind of conditional use if there's something that's questionable. And but anyway, like I said, the permitted uses have been gone through two or three times. So it's pretty well gleaned out. And we also recommend that the council adopt the implementation of 5517 with SUER. And that is, I mean, I have been personally in meetings with Linda Wilson, Liz Pike, some of the drafters of the bill, and all have indicated that SUER was considered in the development. The language we all know is, is difficult. The other thing is that you have a letter that was written by Mr. Rasch, who is also a member of the Planning Commission, which is used by the county in a trusted position for advisory on how to implement land use options in the county. And we believe that his opining on that opinion is very useful and very valuable in this situation. And waiting for Congress to, and to fix these is not feasible just because of the composition of the legislature and the timing of the process. Just takes forever to get something like that through. And then the last thing we recommend is that, once adopted, it needs to be defended vigorously. Something that hasn't happened in the past, two attempts at getting this property, it was not defended and it was given up on pretty quickly. And I'd go to the next, the map, this is the map that I sent the, this council a copy of early on. And it shows, the white area is what the committee recommended. And we at the Railroad Advisory Board looked that over and said, there's some highly parcellized areas still in that. So we carved it down to the part that's the heavy red outline, which is this line here, that heavy red. And that encompasses all of the part that the Planning Commission had recommended, but it also includes the other large areas on the east side of 503. But those areas that we've left out are ones that are highly parcellized or populated. Next slide. This is a map of that, that area by itself without the other overlay, overlays on it. So that's the entire part that the Railroad Advisory Board recommends adopting. And it's all, all of those properties will touch the one-mile radius and carves out the, like I said, the highly populated areas. Next slide. In addition to that, Mr. Lagler has continually requested that his property is being included in that. He has been the impetus for the maps that were shown for both the railroad industrial overlay and the Rural Industrial Land Bank. And you can see it's, his is all marked in pink. It's either he owns it or controls it or his family owns it. His sons own some of those properties. And you can see also that there is a chunk of his property on the, on the east side of 503 that is not included in the overlay that we're suggesting. But the provision that we said in, in developing this, we said that if it's connected in some way to the properties within the boundary, it could be allowed to be added into the boundary because it would have a direct access through that property to the, to the railroad. So that would allow us to add that property on to whatever the overlay is. And I will not, I'm not suggesting that we extend the overlay further than a mile because that's plenty of distance to consider properties. At any rate, that's, as we can see, the Lagler property is a big piece of what we're recommending. The total that we're recommending is around, what is it, 1,600?
1,590.
Yes, around 1,600 acres of property. And then if you add in that property, it's probably at least another 100 to 150 acres of property that would be involved in that process. But, and there are a couple of little areas that may need to be carved out because there's some, some parcellized items in there, which we think we can carve out easily. At any rate, that's the recommended overlay that we have. And now I'll let John take over and talk about the benefits to Clark County.
Thank you. I was hoping.
You're good.
I was hoping Councilor Young would be here because it's the last work section you had. His question was, what's the benefits of Clark County? And I think every board member that's come on the board for the Railroad Advisory Board has asked the same question. I know Dan did, I know I did, like, what in the world is Clark County doing with the railroad? Ain't going to make any money at 10 bucks a car going across the railroad. And my other, my other concern was, what is all this public money going into what is essentially a private business on a public, on a rideaway? But the more you get into the numbers, the more it starts making sense.
Can we please adjust the mic for a little bit? More volume or clarity?
Yeah, my, my.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Perfect, thank you.
My voice is a little scratchy, anyway. So when you get into the numbers, then things start making sense. You know, the, the first thing that comes to mind is the increased revenue of these type of projects. And, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is, you know, property tax. You know, not only real property tax for the increased use of the build, of the property, but the buildings. And then the personal property tax of the manufacturing property that goes into the building. But then there's payroll taxes, there's sales and use taxes. And we're talking about good manufacturing jobs. And I think I told some of you about the Burlington Northern visit out to the site. You know, when people want a site, property on railroad, they go to Burlington Northern. What do you have in your inventory if they're looking for a regional area? If they're looking for a specific area, they may go to CREDC or they may go to the railroad operator if they know about that. And Burlington Northern came out to the site, they looked at the Lagler property at that time. And they said if the Lagler property was developed, you know, it was owned properly and if the railroad was improved to handle the, the new cars, the heavy cars, it would be, Eric told us, a premier site on the West Coast. I will say a premier site on the West Coast. So we're not talking about, you know, mom-and-pop operation. We're coming, we're talking about some real high-class, high-paying jobs coming into the county, which is what we need. I'm tired of seeing Vancouver just being a bedroom community for Portland. And that has a good chance of changing in the future too. And I'll get into that later. Also, with manufacturing jobs, you have ancillary jobs. I've been out of, I've been retired for a few years now, but when I was still working, the factor was 2.5. For every manufacturing job, you create 2.5 ancillary jobs in the community to support each of those jobs. Then you have the question of the traffic, particularly the bridge traffic. Former city manager Battleground told us that 70% of the employed people in the city of Battleground drive across the Columbia River every day. 70%. You know, if we have the jobs, local businesses hire locally. You know, you talk about all the traffic going down Highway 503, what percentage of those people are going across the river every day? And 503 traffic is very, very. And five oh three traffic is very, very concerning right now. I don't know what level it is right now, but it was level three heading towards D about fifteen years ago. So I have no idea what is that right now. And you have to look at, you know, where Clark County is right now. Hopefully, I'm sure the county is looking at what's the paradigm shift is going to be coming up with the new bridge. You know, twenty years ago, living in Clark County was a no-brainer, working in Portland. You know, houses were way cheaper here. Property taxes were way cheaper because Portland taxes were sky-high because they had no sales tax. You know, and you had a reasonable, reasonable commute. Gas wasn't that cheap, the commute time wasn't that bad. And wink, wink, everybody knew you could go over to Portland and buy your refrigerators and stuff and not pay sales tax and bring it back into Washington. Things have changed. You know, the gas prices went up. Now, you know, if you go to Oregon to buy something, it better be something big because you just offset the gas. Now with the bridge coming in, if it's four bucks each way, if you go to Oregon, you gotta spend at least a hundred bucks to even break even. So that, that game is good. The price of housing now is on par with Oregon. And guess what? So are property taxes. So now, I don't hear much, many people talking about it in Vancouver, but I sure hear them talking about, the employers talking about in Portland. Because up until this point, the people, the community, the workers in, in Vancouver going to Oregon, really all they're sacrificing is a little gas and a little time. Soon as those tolls go in, it's going to be about two grand a year. And they're not happy about that. And some of them are saying to their employers, we want you to pay that. And they're talking to their legislators, what are we going to do about that? You know, the best case, best-case scenario is that the jobs will come to the workers. That's my hope. Worst-case scenario, you know, the, the jobs will start finding ways to build houses for the workers. And I don't know if you follow it in Oregon, but this year, the governor asked for the ability to unilaterally build businesses and housing outside of your urban growth boundary in the Portland area, in the Tri-Met area. And she got, she got it for businesses. She didn't get it for housing this session. So that's how serious they're taking it over there. You know, and this, this whole thing's going to happen when construction starts on the bridge. You're going to have about five or seven years of traffic jams, and that commute time's going to go crazy. So it's time now to start looking at that. Are we going to be prepared for that, or will we not? The other thing with large, with large parcels of property, you have the ability to bring in a large developer. You have a lot of things that you can do. Now, I'm sure you're aware of the CTC proper, you know, Columbia Tech Center. You know, I did the original grading plan for the Columbia Tech Center. It was originally purchased by two individuals. And I'm sure you know that's a mine. You know, it was level with Southeast First Street. And we worked out a deal where we did a grading plan. If you look, the property slowly transitions down, and it slowly transitions up on the other side. And we took about twenty million tons of rock out of there. And, but the two individuals were, you know, trying to find financing and stuff. So then they brought in Pat Truss. World of difference, Pat Truss had it figured out. You know, you were, you talk about how you hook up to Sauer's, how much is that going to cost? The county said, here's where the Sauer hookups are. And Pat Truss said, okay. And that was the last thing Clark County had to worry about. You know, it was a whole new deal. They, you know, on a situation like this, you have a big parcel. You know, anything that you don't want near a neighbor, they put in the middle. Now you don't have a three-hundred-foot buffer, now you have a half-mile buffer. You know, they, they can put the buffering, they can put the landscaping on the outside. You know, these guys know what they're doing. You can't do that. If a guy has a twenty-acre parcel, first of all, he's constrained by finances. There's only so much he can do and still make a profit on it. You know, he's just going to be worried about getting as much square footage of building he can on it, you know, and minimize the amount of property he's going to lose because of buffering and setbacks and those type of things. So that's, that's the beauty of having a large parcel of property. And they better participate in the needed improvements of the property. So, next slide. On- Back one, there we go. So on, I created this analysis back in two thousand and seventeen when we met with the Battleground School District. You know, Battleground School District has, they have financial problems. It's, you know, they're all, they're funded primarily by single-family housing. And I'm told over and over again that single-family housing uses more services than they actually pay for in their, in their property taxes. Businesses pay more in the services that they use. I don't have any numbers to back that up, but I'm told that over and over again by more and more people, both in government and out. So that's what I'm going for. So anyhow, I took all the, all these parcels, and there's ninety-six parcels. Current valuation is forty million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, twenty-five grand an acre. The total revenue for that whole area is three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So then I took three, at that time, well-known properties, I thought, that are situated on light industrial property. Frito, Frito-Lay, Tetra Pak, and Messer. Everybody knows Frito-Lay. Not too many people know Messer because they just changed names. It used to be Lindy Gas, and everybody knew Lindy Gas out there on seventy-eight by the railroad tracks. Tetra Pak, their, their business is packaging other people's products. They're a huge company, but not too many people know about it. These are old, well-established companies. They're old, they're old buildings and stuff. This is, you know, one of the very conservative number. I mean, all of them, their taxes haven't changed in the last fifteen years. You know, if you look at their taxes in two thousand and six, they're about the same as they are now. Even though the tax rates have gone up, their buildings have depreciated, and they've kind of stayed level. So anyhow, the, the weighted average, their different, different averages is about a million to an acre. So if you take that over that, those parcels, you come up, instead of three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the total hundred and sixty, or sixteen hundred acres, you get sixteen million, nine hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars of taxes coming off of that property. You know, actually, we showed that to Battleground School District, and they go, what do we got to do? That is, that is the value of that property. And when, when you look at this, this is the only piece of property in, that I can find on the county that is rail-served, it's on a state highway, and it has close access to the freeway system. All the three things that these guys are looking for. And the other thing, the beauty of it, the lament of Clark County, councillors or commissioners, you know, I've been here thirty-seven years, and it's always been the same, all the way back to the Vancouver Mall, which was before my time, is that the county would go through the planning, and they'd do all the work, and spend all the money, and get these things permitted, and they'd get built, and by the time they'd all start producing revenue, the city would swoop in and annex it and take all that revenue, and the, and the county would be sitting there with nothing. Well, the beauty about this is that you can put in the time, you can do the permitting, you can get these things producing the revenue, and it's outside the urban growth boundary. The city cannot annex it unless you guys make the decision to put it inside the urban growth boundary. And if you want it straight next door, then they can annex it. But as long as it's outside the urban growth boundary, that revenue is yours. And nobody said anything about that in any of the work sessions that I've been to, though. Uh, next slide. The CREDC, you know, I'm sure it sent you the reports of all the jobs that have come to the area. And most of them, they haven't been able to fulfill because we don't have property of a size that needs to be permitted. You know, twenty twenty-two, ten of the twelve larger acre requests were outside the scope and the capacity of Clark County industrial land inventory. You know, and on the rim. If you go to the next slide, you'll see, here's a list of all the jobs. Now, in the last year of their reporting, from January first, twenty twenty-two, to May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, twelve projects have come to CREDC looking for, to cite job-producing businesses located on rail in Clark County. These projects would have required one thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven acres of properties-owned, property with rail access. And these projects would have produced five thousand, two hundred and forty-five manufacturing jobs, the kind we need. You know, they had to keep on looking because we had the rail, but we did not have the properties-owned property. So five thousand, two hundred and forty-five good-looking, or good, good jobs passed through the county, and we didn't land one. So we have an opportunity here to create something. Now, I know it's on farmland. Yes. But I also know that when we did the Rural Industrial Land Bank hearings, that the planning staff did an analysis of all the farmland in Clark County. I'm pretty sure they still have that somewhere, might have dusted off. But they did analysis of the quality of farmland in Clark County, and they found this farmland to be some of the least productive. Huh? Dr. Oliver, he's the one that presented it. You know, I just, I just listened to it.
Go ahead with your presentation.
Pardon?
I, I just said, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. But, back to you. I'm done.
Well, I, I just want to reiterate the fact that, that the, the jobs being lost by not having property available in Clark County. There's, there's no one, no other place in Clark County that's producing this kind of activity. And this gives us the opportunity to, to have jobs available to residents of Clark County. And like John said, the, the hassle of going across the bridge, going through the construction of a new bridge, all of that is, is going to be very painful for those people who are working in, in Oregon. And ongoing, even after everything's done, there's going to be that toll of, to be paid in going across the river. And if we can bring a lot of these jobs back to Clark County, it certainly is beneficial to the tax base as well as the, the people who work here in Clark County. I, I want to mention one other thing. In addition to what the CREDC has, has reported on this list, there are numerous people who have inquired of the railroad operator of properties that need rail-serve property. So this list is only a partial list. And in addition to that, the CREDC has not reported the ones that, that requested rail, but it's not absolutely required for their business. So they, they do not put those on this list. So there's other properties, other incidences of properties that were desired to have rail-serve property, but it's not a necessity. These are only the ones that require, absolutely require rail in their process. And the number of jobs created here is just, it's phenomenal for the county. And the other thing I wanted to reemphasize in, in that is the large parcel. The, the parcel that's now dedicated for rail industrial use, the, is around, what, four hundred acres, I think? Three hundred plus? I mean, you can look at this list, and you see that, you know, one or two of these people would take up the entire piece of property that's there, and then you're left with nothing more to go on to add additional people. So adding, adding this size of property certainly is beneficial to Clark County and the tax, the tax base alone is, is a real benefit in the fact that you provide these jobs in Clark County. People working in Clark County would definitely be a benefit. The large developer also provides the opportunity to improve the infrastructure in and around that area. I mean, I know that the people from Brushbury, one of their complaints is that there's the rail crossings that go through that area of Brushbury are not well-regulated, and they're not, they're, they're in critical positions where they could get trapped in a road without any access. All those things can be fixed by a developer who comes in and redevelops that whole property and makes it much more palatable for the people who live in and around that area. The buffering is another thing that's very important to people who live in the area. And there's not going to be smokestack-type operations in there anyway. It's all going to be light industrial. And like John said, you put the, the most offensive things in the middle and have all kinds of buffering around it. I will just wrap up and say, you know, we, we, we went through where we've been, what the railroad was when I came on twenty years ago, and John came on about fifteen years ago. And we've told you what we should do going forward with the property. And John went through some pretty compelling reasons that give some results for Clark County. And so we're asking that they be approved and move forward with the railroad industrial property. Any questions?
Chair, I have a few questions. You're on mute, but I'm-
Go ahead, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Right. Related to the, whether or not the Lagler property is prime agricultural land. And I, I've, I've looked at the maps, I've talked to the Conservation District about it several years ago. It's, it's prime ag, and it's the soils, it's not how much money they may be making, but it's prime ag. And what isn't prime ag is wetland, so that's just to clarify that. You know, there, I understand your desires to create jobs, I think. And keeping jobs on this side of the river is critically important. I agree with all that. I think the reality, though, and what has been a struggle all these years, is there's some sticking points because of the Growth Management Act, and that this land is designated agricultural land. That's what prevented the Rural Industrial Land Bank bringing it into the urban growth boundary. There were challenges, and it wasn't upheld because it was prime agricultural land. But because of the legislation that was passed, there's, there's an ability to develop on agricultural land. But there, there are sideboards on that that, that limit that ability. And we can proceed as if there aren't those sideboards. But I think that would be to invite litigation and delay things even further. So I guess, in looking at, at how we move forward, I would suggest that we, you know, take that four hundred acres, and there is some land further south in the Vancouver growth boundary that is designated rail-industrial. And then there's heavy industrial up in the west side. So there are some components that could be worked with for starters to move, to move things forward. So that's what I would suggest, looking at that. And that, and that the sticking points, if you're going a mile out, is that the people who live there, I know, when this was being developed before, there was the advisory committee that met and developed all of it. First notice that came out to the public was that mile out. First notice that came out to the public was that mile out and yet people were not happy about that. There's multiple conflicts in the more land that you try to take in. So that'll be hurdles to overcome. And then I also think that the issue of adjacency, that's, that can be an issue that will be challenged if you try to bring in too much. And I don't know that there was a definition of adjacency in the bill itself, but that, that can be a sticking point. And there still remains a sticking point about urban services because the legislation, as I read it, clearly says not to extend urban services. And I know you all recommended the tight line, but you know, how does that work if you've got, you know, a mile out on all sides? You can't have multiple tight lines. It doesn't seem to make sense. And I think it'd be important to bring in the, uh, regional sewer system, uh, to, uh, talk about this as well. I think they're an element that hasn't really been engaged in what, you know, and that's fundamental as far as a service for the area and what can be achieved as far as onsite treatment. And then one other question I had related to, uh, some of your charge, I think as a committee is, uh, was to develop a list of bulk commodities which make up 90% of the freight, uh, that is hauled in, in, I think maybe nationally. But if there is a specific list of what those, uh, bulk commodities might be so that we could target, you know, outreach to some of the, uh, businesses that provide, provide those bulk, uh, commodities.
The group's charge were, um, they gave us a list of, uh, the group's charge when we informed the group was here is a list of prohibited bulk items.
Prohibited ones.
But then everything else was open.
Okay.
So we have, we have no idea what, what businesses are going to require. Like, you know, like we know, Frito Lay brings in cook, uh, cooking oil by rail, but we don't know what else they bring in.
But there is a list of bulk commodities that are hauled by freight. Does that exist?
I'm sure it does, and it's probably a mile long.
Okay. I just, I just thought it would help target, uh, our outreach to potential businesses.
I don't see how.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thanks.
May I respond to the, the, uh, the situation of the 400 acres? I am told personally by a individual who is very close to Mr. Lagler, that, um, he uses every inch of property that he has to run his business right now, whether it's hay, whether it's grazing, whether it's pasture, whatever it might be, he's using every inch of his property. And by using the 400 acres, um, that, uh, 160 or 170 acres of that property, that 400 acres is, is Lagler pasture land. And if he can't, if he has to have every inch of it, it's highly doubtful if he's going to put his property, that piece of property into industrial and not get something for the rest of his property is going to be untenable. Now, I know Mr. Temple has indicated that he believes Mr. Lagler will sell that piece of property separately. So I don't know. I, I think the gentleman that I have talked with, uh, is much closer to Mr. Lagler than Eric Temple is. The other thing I, I want to point out is that that small piece of property will be developed by, um, a, maybe a single individual. It may be developed by Mr. Temple himself, and therefore you're in the hands of one single individual. Whereas if you have a large property that you have a major developer, you can get the concessions, get the things done you need to get done, and you'll have multiple people coming in to use the property as opposed to one, one particular, uh, person.
I think the struggle will be how to do that within the confines of the legislation because, because I think it's definitely limits that. And it may be that there's not a makeup of the legislature that you think would be able to adjust the language of the bill. But I think fundamentally, for what you want, I think the, 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 there needs to be additional legislation.
Limits what? The, the size of the property or?
Just, just for the whole, everything that you're recommending as far as a mile out and, and all of that.
It's my understanding that the legislation, and I, I've read it, I mean, I don't, I don't propose to fully understand it because legislators talk in different language than I do. But there, there is, the restriction or the limitation on the size of the property is left up to the council of the county to determine. And I guess somebody could, could argue that, but it's left up to the county to decide what those parameters are.
I guess it gets to dependent on and, uh, adjacent to, and urban services.
Yes, yeah, like it's a little different. I mean, I think no matter what you pass, you're going to get sued. And, uh, I, if it was me, I would put it all in there. I would, um, take it to the Growth Management Board and they could find the exception with what they want and put their reason why they have the exception. Then I could go back and say, okay, we can fix these. Or the things we can't fix, those are the things we go back for legislative fix. But all we've been doing for the last couple of years is speculating, what might this be? What might that be? And we don't have any concrete evidence on anything. I mean, you know, even the county attorney is, was like, I don't know. Well, let's, let's go to the court and let's find out something for real.
Madam Chair, can we hear from other counselors? I think we've heard enough from friends of Clark County's political point of view.
Go ahead, Counselor Medvigi, if you have something to say.
Thank you. I think, um, much of what I, what I just heard, um, I share the view of, and much of what I heard, I understand is the, the very reason why this council, why prior commissions, why the executive has failed to implement this legislation. It's a lack of political will, nothing more. You know, the governor signed this legislation 2017, I think, is, you know, it's almost seven years ago. And the, the purple and the blue on the map is so feeble as a result of that we have not implemented this statute. Yes, there are issues. Yes, there are challenges. But that's the hard job that we need to make decisions on and give political guidance, policy guidance to our staff to get this put in place. It's been seven years. Let's get it done. So what I'm hearing and, and what I'd like to comment on is, number one, we don't know what businesses need septic or sewer. That long list that Kredik had, we don't know whether they would, uh, need conditional uses or be fully approved, or how much water they would need to process needing, um, sewer service. The reality is, most of them probably can function just fine if we were to do our job and zone, uh, and, and pass the permitted uses, the development regulations, the conditional uses. The staff did a lot of work on this years ago. Let's get it done. Let's approve it. Let's, the work's been done. A little bit more needs to be done to maybe fine tune some of the language. Sewer or septic would be a good added language. So not knowing what needs sewer, uh, that's a, that's a red herring. You know, the statement that it was a poison pill, you know, I, I have tried to evaluate that when I first heard it from a previous manager over the many years, and I've, I've come to the conclusion that it is a red herring, meaning it's not that big an issue. We need to move forward. So I would like to get these, uh, our development regulations published and finalized on the quickest fast track we can. I'd like to define those, those resource lands that are adjacent. Adjacency is an issue. You know, for me, and I know I differ from other people's perspective, to me, if you can, if it's touching, if you can touch it with a spur, if it's next near the rail line close enough so that you can have a spur, then it's adjacent. Now, looking out to a mile, yeah, that's probably too far reaching. 500 feet, that's way too little. And yes, if, if you have a spur, uh, on a parcel that's adjacent and that parcel continues out to 1,000 feet or 2,500 feet, maybe out to a mile, it's still adjacent. So I would agree that once it touches, it's adjacent, but reaching out a mile may be too much. But that's, that's where we need to make a decision. Do we stick with 500? I would say, yeah, let's move forward. And I would put that purple all the way out to the terminus. And I've been advocating that for every day that I've been on the council since 2019. It's a short line. We shouldn't make it shorter. Let's get it all the way out. Now, will, will that, uh, purple, uh, along the rail line be everywhere? No, it won't. There are critical areas. There are lands that are just incompatible, uh, with industrial use. And whether or not, uh, the reality of sewer as well as, you know, we need the economic development, we need the local jobs, and maybe that'll push the need eventually for another race water, regional wastewater treatment facility. But until you get a, another treatment facility east or northeast of Battleground, uh, there, because of the tyranny of terrain, it is just economically impossible, uh, to have sewer in all locations. We know that. But that doesn't exclude the many businesses that are proposing to come here and provide good jobs. I, I think there's a lot to be said for the management issue. I think you've highlighted that. I don't know what the coordinator's doing right now for the county. I know that we've lost opportunities for grants. I know that, I don't think we've applied for a single railroad crossing, uh, grant, and we have great need and the money's available and we've never applied. You know, we, Washougal just got one. They went to Washington and advocated for it, and the Secretary of Transportation himself came and approved it. We have a lot of opportunity for that. And if we had a robust coordinator or management, uh, of the railroad, uh, we would see a lot more progress across the board. Uh, and safety issues, um, so there's a lot of good arguments for let's get this done now. Did we hear the words land for jobs? Land for jobs? We just heard it yesterday. We're working on it. Well, why would we give up this opportunity and postpone it for the last seven years when we have the opportunity to, uh, grow our economy, to provide local jobs, good jobs? Now, some of those businesses, and it gets into the uses, I, I don't know what kind of effluent they would produce, whether they're compatible, whether it's a clean industry. You know, I saw some battery manufacturers there, EV manufacturers. I don't know what that industry, uh, produces in the way of byproducts. You know, maybe it isn't, uh, a good fit. You know, certainly in a perfect world, we would have all clean industry. I certainly would really like to push for getting rock and timber and lumber and processing for lumber, uh, back on our rail line. I think that would be, uh, a great original use, uh, reincarnated. So, uh, we have an economic development position vacant. Perhaps we should fill that position and do ahead it as our railroad manager, because that's a primary thrust, is figuring out how to use this, this law that the governor signed seven years ago to benefit our local constituents. So I, you know, it's political will. We can either mark our time pushing it off into the future and dithering and worrying about all the friction points, or we can make some really good pragmatic decisions and move the staff forward in getting this done. So I, I would like the council to publicly state whether we can, um, approve these development regulations, uh, at the soonest possible moment. Let's fix the adjacency definition. Let's define it where it makes sense. And then again, we know it's, and, and we were just advised, there are some densely partial, uh, properties, especially in the Brush Prairie area, that are no longer available for rail loot, use. We know that. We're not going to pave over, uh, existing residences, uh, to put in, we're not going to replace them or displace them for, uh, industry. But we need jobs. We need land for jobs. We have an opportunity here. We have failed, uh, to fulfill the promise that the governor and the legislature, uh, offered to us, despite the sideboards that may be there. So let's move forward. Let's, uh, publicly say, let's, at least three of us publicly say and direct that we're going to approve these, uh, development regulations. I think that's the next step. You know, maybe we need to bring up the whole council as, on the details of that, what is permitted? What is a conditional use? You know, I read the, the buffering. I think they were really well informed. Staff put a lot of work into this years ago. All for nothing because of a lack of political will. All during this time, during the litigation, we used it as an excuse not to do anything. We didn't have to do that. I had advocated all along that we continue our work on the railroad dependent law. It wasn't going to jeopardize the litigation, uh, despite the advice to the contrary. But nevertheless, it's behind us now. We have wasted all those years, uh, of doing nothing. So let's stop the pause. Let's move forward in a pragmatic way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I just have a, a short comment. At least I anticipate it being short. And that is that, you know, there are, there is a lack of political will on some, on some parts, in some ways, by some individuals. And then on, I'm going to call it the other side of the fence, there is an equal lack of political will, and the two seem to mesh together. And it comes out to a lack of political will for the body of a whole to move forward, but not for any one side. So as I look at this, I look at it a little bit differently. I look at it as, what is it that stops and has stopped for so many years? The progress, the progression of the movement of decision-making on this? And I think it's under that name bickering. Because as long as one side says, well, you know, the problem is 5517, and the other side says, no, it's not 5517 there, that's not the problem, and the one mile radius is the problem, no, it's not the one mile radius. It can go on and on forever without resolution. And that's what we've got, is no resolution on these matters that deserve it if we are going to agree on a goal of increasing jobs through this mechanism for Clark County. And I happen to agree with that goal of increasing jobs for Clark County through this mechanism. And if you do too, then there would be ways that we could, in fact, join together, not bicker about what is the reality here and the reality there, but bicker about what is the reality here and the reality there, but simply work through them. And I couldn't agree more with what Counselor Peterson said, or I'm sorry, Counselor Marshall said, when she said that there are hurdles. There are hurdles. There are big hurdles. That's fine. So we've got hurdles. Let's just work through them together. So how do we do that? I think that we have to have a meeting of the minds, which includes the people who are in decision-making positions, to make this project either go forward or not go forward. One of the two. Let's just get the proper people together and off we go. And clearly, I think it stands to reason that the Railroad Advisory Board is right at the helm of that group. There's staff that is at the helm. There are counselors that are at the helm. And we need to meet and work through those hurdles so that they are not seen that way. They are not allowed as the subject of bickering, and they are instead fostered for our ability to stand up and make decisions. Now, if we wish to go along with that, you know, I concur with the counselor who said, yes, let's approve these regulations that are before now. I concur with that. And if others do, my vote is right there with you. And I know that that's already two votes. I don't know about three. So how do we proceed? We work together and we just get rid of some of these mental games that we've been playing on the subject for reasons that are really very, very strange when it comes to a goal of developing jobs in Clark County. So that's my two cents. If anyone else wishes to comment on going forward or passing the regulations or approving the regulations that came before us today from the Railroad Advisory Board, I'd love to hear about.
Chair, this is Kathleen. Can I just clarify one thing? So following the work session, the prior work session that council had with staff regarding this at the end of May, there were three next steps that was directed to staff. And I can tell you, they're ready to come back to council. The first one was legal reviewing the law and identifying potential legal issues resulting in possible amendments that may be helpful, providing clarity. The second one was community planning staff to review and update the options that were presented on the slide, and option four particularly, which is the development regulations. That is done and ready to come back to council for discussion. And then also reviewing how schools obtain sewer. So I just wanted to clarify, there was direction given to staff. I think legal just finished their part earlier this week, but Oliver and his team have been ready and were ready to bring that back to council time or another work session for your...
Let's do that, Kathleen, because in my opinion, that would be one of the main mechanisms for us are getting over these hurdles and past what I call bickering to factual discussions. There's no substitute for factual discussions. It's a wonderful thing to have, and that's what we need. So I bet you could get that scheduled really soon.
Chair, if I could just make a couple...
Can we hear from Glenn and Michelle?
Yes, just one quick moment. I'd like to know the possible scheduling of this from Kathleen.
I can add it to next Wednesday's council time.
Excellent. Yes, excellent. Yes, go ahead. Who is that? Counselor McCall?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Right ahead, Counselor.
I have a few comments concerning the railroad. I have pored over the legislation. I have read the assessment of state support for shortline rail infrastructure that was done by the state. I have looked extensively through all the meeting minutes on the railroad page, on the county page that's dedicated to the railroad, of all the history to bring myself up to speed and educate myself on the railroad. And I also read over the CREDC report on all the jobs that these gentlemen have mentioned that will come to our county. I also understand that with the railroad, by implementing it, there'll be a huge, very great, not negative, environmental impact in our community. It'll keep all these trucks that are trucking all these different things into our community. That's a positive thing. I see all these just different positive things, the support of the legislature and the support of the community. I just, everything that I've read and I've understood about railroad coming into our community, I only see good in every different facet. So I support going forward. Like you mentioned, Chair, you know, there are going to be some things that will have to work out, but let's get this moving so we can start to work those out and have those discussions. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify a couple...
Counselor Marshall.
Thank you. Just to clarify a couple of points, I agree that there is a pathway forward. I'm just, would advocate that we can be consistent with the Growth Management Act. And then, I know there's a couple of staff people in the room today that have been assigned to the Rail Advisory Committee and have been working on this, and it's my understanding that we have been successful in attracting grants. I don't know, Kathleen, if you could clarify that.
Yes, we have received grants in the past, and I believe council just approved a grant for the railroad on August 1st as well of this year.
Yeah, my point was that we've not applied for grants for crossings that we could have. We've missed grant rounds just through inadvertence, and that either a rail manager or coordinator could be focused on that and not miss those opportunities.
So at this point, I think that we have reached a point in our discussion where we see the path forward for next Wednesday at council time, and I look forward to that.
Chair.
Yes. Don't know who that was, Counselor Young perhaps?
Yeah, Counselor Young, thank you. I just haven't had a chance to chime in yet. So my thoughts on this are, first of all, I really appreciate the presentation that was given to us, and if everything were as simple as that, I would be fully on board because I want to bring good quality jobs to our county. I share similar concern to Counselor Marshall in RCW. It says, "Such counties and cities may also modify development regulations to include development of freight rail dependent uses that do not require urban governmental services in rural lands." That to me says that we are going to have a major problem when those lawsuits come, if we do push forward with sewer. That being said, I'm a little frustrated because the plan, the economic analysis, which I so much appreciate, but it was based on the sewer being available in the rural area, and I don't think we're going to get there. So I don't understand the whole economic picture. However, I do know that creating jobs is going to be beneficial for our county. So I think that, you know, we have the potential to move forward here, you know, not under the assumption that we're going to be able to have sewer out there. And I think we should look at that. My biggest concern, however, is mitigation. I don't know how we're going to be able to mitigate appropriately. And to build on Counselor Medvigi's comments, crossings are going to be a huge issue as we increase capacity. This line crosses 503, and you know, if we have, you know, traffic, rail traffic crossing over 503, I don't know how we're going to mitigate that. And we would certainly need some grant funding to create like a rail overpass or something of that nature. So, and then we've, because we've been undecided or the rail just hasn't been utilized for so long, we've made the mistake of building housing way too close to the rail. So, you know, there's dangerous spots. That to me, you can't move forward without having the danger mitigated. But then there's also quality of life that we're going to have to consider mitigation for when people are so close to that line. So there are a lot of concerns that I have. I am interested in looking for how we can make this work, but I think we have to really, really focus on that mitigation point and make sure that it is feasible to do so. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask the manager and staff, because we really haven't had this question answered, and it's really only been recently then we've even been seeing named potential businesses interested in coming. How many of those named potential businesses require sewer? We've never had that spoken to. You know, if every single one of them needs sewer, we've got a problem. If only one or two of them do, then there's no problem. That was my point with the red herring. So I'm wondering if we could, during our next session, either hearing from CREDC or staff, if there's been any hint of data behind these businesses as to whether or not they even require sewer.
And that can be done, correct, Kathleen? I think I've seen, you know, require sewer, would like to have sewer, it's not required. So I've seen that continuum, and that is very illustrative.
We can certainly look into that and ask the questions and also reach out to CREDC if we don't have that clarity, because it might be, yeah, we'll have to do some research on that to find the answer, because if they haven't applied for permits or anything like that, we are not going to know unless we reach out.
So here we are, ready for next Wednesday's meeting, where we tackle the three things that council had asked for, and thank you, staff, for your readiness to discuss those with us. I believe that concludes the discussion for today, unless there are any closing words from our Railroad Advisory Board.
I'd like to make one additional comment that I didn't emphasize now, but I have emphasized in the past. A dedicated railroad coordinator would be immensely beneficial to you as the council and to everybody concerned with the railroad that could pull these things together and be your eyes and ears on the ground, if you will, to all of these issues. And that's what we had in a couple of the previous dedicated coordinators to the railroad. And I've advocated for this continuously, and I'll continue to advocate for it. It's necessary. You have a valuable, very valuable asset here that's not being utilized, and having a dedicated railroad coordinator can be very beneficial to that whole effort. And I urge you to seriously consider that immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that is the final comment I hear or see in terms of a raised hand. So I would like to call this work session to a halt for today and simply say thank you, a huge thank you to everyone who participated, because as we've pointed out, this is a series of gnarly issues with which this council needs to deal. And we were prepared to do that. Thank you for helping us in that regard. So the work session for the railroad, from the Railroad Advisory Board for freight rail dependency is called to a halt for today, and we look forward to discussion again at council time next week. We move on now.